Hello and welcome. This is a regular session of the Town of South Kingston Town Council. The date is Monday, July 26, 2010, and the time is approximately 7:30. Could you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please Dale.
President Fogarty?
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley?
Here.
All members present.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion for work session A, July 12?
I move approval of the minutes from work session July 12, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is B for regular session, July 12.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular session for July 12, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a public hearing. Public hearing, um, A is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the town code that would establish a new chapter 21 entitled Flood Plane Management as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here too, and I think Mr. Murray is going to be describing the flood plane management plans for the town. Vin?
Yeah, good evening. This particular ordinance addition to the town code would be in compliance with recent mandates from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, under the National Flood Insurance Program. The NFIP, which is National Flood Insurance Program, consists of flood insurance, flood plane management, and flood hazard mapping. Uh, over the last 18 months, FEMA has undertaken a map modernization project under the NFIP. Those, and on the board behind the town manager is an example of the updated map for the town. I believe there's a series of, and that would actually replace these black and white versions, and it's based on 2003 and 2004 aerial mapping of the community. And they, these updated maps were used in improved technologies for flood hazard identification. They updated land use and easier access to flood data. The firm maps, which these panels, they identify flood risk areas within the community, and essentially they identify the 100-year flood plain, which are called A zones of various denominations, and V zones, which is the 100-year flood plain with wave velocity along the coastal areas. We did provide in the memorandum to the council, an excerpt from the firm map legend which identifies the various zones. Uh, these maps have been on the town's website for, under the building officials page, for a couple of months now, and a review of the data for the entirety of the town shows that of the 11,864 parcels, twenty, a little over 2,400, about 20% are located in the 100-year flood zone. Um, of those, 2,416, 2,123 are zoned residential, 97 commercial, and 23 industrial. We should note as well that many of the parcels that are within the flood plain are non-buildable, open space lots, or the great swamp area, for example, which consumes a very large chunk of the community. Uh, as part of the flood plane management program, each town is required to adopt a flood plane management program, and that's the reason for tonight's ordinance consideration. Uh, that would be a threshold for our continued participation in the program, and we've been participatory for many years. The program itself actually dates back to the late 60s following Hurricane Betsy and its impact on Louisiana and Florida. Um, each municipality must adopt a flood plane management ordinance within six months of the formal acceptance of the maps. These maps will become effective for the Town of South Kingston on October the 19th, 2010. The Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency has requested, working with FEMA, that the officially adopted ordinance be submitted no later than 45 days prior to that October 19th effective date. So as such, REMA is asking that the communities have their ordinances in place no later than September the 3rd. Uh, the ordinance that's under consideration tonight is based on a template draft that was developed by the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency, and it was updated by town staff from my office, the building official, and the special legal counsel for planning and zoning, um, to, you know, customize it, so to speak, for the Town of South Kingston. The special legal counsel has also reviewed the mandatory checklist provided by FEMA and finds that the ordinance is compliant with all minimum required federal and state standards. Uh, in essence, this ordinance would codify and place in one place a lot of disparate requirements that are already in place. Um, I think it provides, in essence, I don't think there's a lot of new changes or requirements that would be placed. It would require a permit to be issued, and that's the permit's called a flood hazard development permit, and there's a checklist, and we'll have to develop forms for that. The ordinance, um, uh, it's, my understanding, the building official intends to issue such permits concurrent with the issuance of a building permit. It would be affect, it would affect properties that were new construction within these areas or substantial rehabilitation of structures within these areas greater than 50% of the value. And that's defined in the ordinance as well, how that would be calculated or what that would include. The ordinance also would extend itself to cover subdivisions, which really is not directly covered now except for the planning board review, of five lots of greater or greater than five acres of disturbance. It would also extend to activities within the flood hazard areas that, um, you know, if there was no building permit required, for example, if there was a cut or a fill on a coastal lot. And I think it'd be, it's just good prudent planning practice to calculate those impacts or to mitigate those rather than not regulate them. And I guess lastly, there are certain areas in the A zones where the flood elevation is not determined. For a proposal that's subject to this ordinance in those areas, there would be a requirement that an engineering study be undertaken to determine the base flood elevation based on the data sets that are available and the topography and what have you. But, um, you know, as I said, I think these areas are heavily regulated now, and this ordinance really, um, you know, responds to the FEMA mandate, but it also would codify in one place requirements that are in place either by CRMC, DEM, the town, state building code, and it's, you know, it does, in a sense, represent belt and suspenders in some respects. However, I think it's, um, you know, it would be a useful thing for both the federal tracking and the state emergency management tracking as well as the town of development within these areas. The ordinance, as, um, as was discussed in the work session, does provide for, the town may establish a fee, but at this point in time, we have not made any recommendations in that respect. It seems like, you know, Mr. O'Hara does these kinds of reviews for these types of projects at present, and, um, you know, this, it would be concurrent with a lot of the information he gathers for a permit nonetheless. The memo that we provided from, under Ray Nickerson's signature, walks through the provisions. I don't know if the council, and I would say this has also been reviewed by the Conservation Commission, and they had endorsed its passage. And, you know, we are, in some respects, labeling under a timeline based on FEMA and REMA mandates. And I would say that this memo probably has the greatest number of acronyms in it than any memo I've seen in recent memory, but, uh, you know, it, it's kind of, uh, in reshuffling the same deck in a sense, but I think it would position, it is a better data resource, too. These new maps are very, quite nice, actually, especially with the aerial. I think they'll be very useful for the general public to just go on the town's website, go to the building officials page, and click on the, on the map, and you can see, and you can view properties and zoom, you know, and I think that's very, very useful. That's a huge step up from the quality of these maps, which are vintage early 90s.
Vintage early 90s?
Yes.
Any questions for Vin? Carol?
Vin, you were saying it's just for new construction, so just to clarify.
Well, it's new and substantial rehabilitation.
Okay, so people who are in the flood zone currently, they don't, I mean, what you're saying is they do not need to go out and get a permit?
No.
Unless they're going to build a new house?
It's very specific triggers.
Right.
And, you know, there's, you know, right, I mean, if you have an existing.
New construction or substantial reconstruction?
Rehabilitation, right.
Rehabilitation, okay. I just wanted to make that clear, so people didn't think that they had to run out and get a permit?
Right, no, no.
For any other reason?
You know, there's specific triggers to it, and if you don't meet those triggers, then, you know, it has no effect on you. On the other, the other map, we have to show the areas.
Right. And you said earlier that it didn't, the flood zone hasn't really increased.
Well, it's really a requirement of the data set, and when we received the information from FEMA, they made notes specifically in a July 6 letter that there were no significant changes have been made to the flood hazard data on the preliminary or revised preliminary copies of the firm. We've compared them, and, I mean, there might be some subtle differences, but by and large, they reflect what the earlier map series indicated.
Thanks. Ellie, I think you had a question?
Yes, I, we talked about this in the work session, and I thought it would be good if we emphasized that we will not be increasing the cost.
Well, that was mentioned, um, yeah, by the manager during the work session that, um, I think there would be an evaluation done if a year down the road we find that there's, you know, a lot of extra time, but I think, you know, Jeff could attest that he looks at these, these issues now anyway as part of his general building permit review. So, so there's no.
So we don't have to add extra fees on for.
Right, there's no, there's no.
At this point, yeah, that's right.
No, that's right, at this point, no.
You did say that, of course, yeah.
Are there any other questions for Vin? Jim?
Uh, Vin, so if someone was getting ready for their CO, would an elevation certificate be covered by this flood hazard development permit? Or is that going to be some extra money?
An elevation, I see, if they were within the flood, for a new construction within the, I think they'd be doing that anyway, Jeff, right? Yeah, I mean, we've mentioned the term belt and suspenders a couple of times when we, but right now, you'd have to meet that elevation for new construction in any event. So CO would be contingent upon that. Certain, the building people would make certain by an engineering certification that the structure met the requirements for elevation, so yes. But that's not different, that's, that's in place now. Just it's not mentioned in our ordinance, um, at the present time.
All right, my second question is, I noticed some of the, um, zone activity touching some large lots. Suppose a home either going through substantial improvement or a new home site being built where the zone does touch it in the waterfront area, what are they subject to if they're well above that and higher ground?
Well, I think they're, they're building, you know, they're building activity would be, there would be engineering done that could show the extent of it. If they had, like, for example, a 20-acre lot, and there was a little touch on one corner of it, is that?
Yeah, yeah, and it's a number of these properties here.
Right.
You know, the actual zone line is determined by the elevation of the land. Uh, the maps are, they're amazingly accurate, but there is such a scale that you could, you know, a pencil line could be off by two or three feet. If a surveyor or an engineer goes out there and determines that the elevation is supposed to be at 12 feet, and the parcel is cut by this line, and where the dwelling is going to be placed is above the 12-foot line, it puts it out of that zone.
Okay. All right, that's why I might notice, since it's the same property, it's just because it touches that zone, and the waterfront is not, uh, going to mount to a lot more cost because you're at a higher elevation?
Uh, no. And then, all these regulations, it's spelled out in the building code also.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Vin.
Any other questions for Vin? So Vin, I don't know if you touched upon that, any small structures like a garage or?
Right, they, they provide for exemptions for sheds and garages and.
So people don't think that they have to go in and get, you know, the extra work or something like that? There's a value under $1,000 and?
Yeah, yeah.
Small square footage, that type of thing, too? All right, just to make that clear. All right, are there any other questions? No?
No, I mean, just being in the real estate business, I think this is going to be greatly helpful right now. You could always show the audience at home what we go through to undo the maps, those that are still intact, just to find out our wind zones and flood zones, and should be a great improvement to have this.
And, yeah, we've integrated these, these map series into our GIS system already, too, so, you know, um, it's, it's a dramatic improvement in terms of just having the aerial overlay, and although it's a different year than some of our years, but it's still pretty good, so.
Yeah, pretty good indication. If people at home saw with the maps that we were dealing with and seeing what, that's why we invest in GIS and those great maps.
Yeah, I mean, the old maps, if you could, you know, it'd be hard to figure out where a lot was, and now we can, you know, it's much more.
Those are virtually useless, really, the old ones.
User-friendly and good technical resource for the town to have as well.
Right, right, right. Thank you, Vin. If there are any other questions in the public hearing, so open it up to anybody in the public who has a question, please come forward and state your name for the record.
How you doing? Bob Trager? I, I just have one question. They pretty much covered, I think, everything on that flood map thing. But on the detached accessory structures, um, it gives a definition of, if the structure, it does not have to meet the requirements. If the structure is no more than 100 square feet and has a value of less than $1,000, has unfinished interiors, and cannot be used for human habitation, is solely used for, I mean, are these all, every single one of these requirements have to be met, correct? So if you go to Home Depot and you buy a shed that's 12 by 12, you can't put it on your property without getting one of these special permits and anchoring it and getting engineering and everything?
No.
It requires a building, uh, building code that's kind of considered a construction.
But this spells, but this. But this spells out specifically that you can't do it unless it's under 100 square feet, has a value of less than $1,000. You can't buy a shed at any place for under $1,000. So I'm just curious, as to just that one provision, what exactly does that mean?
Jeff, do you want to come forward, just to get it on the mic?
That is a good question.
I thought they were exempt.
They're exempt, that's.
It looks like they're exempt.
Number four, question is that.
As far, as far as sheds go and accessory structures, if there are no habitable space in there, it's considered?
A shed.
A shed or, you know, parking of vehicles. As far as the engineering grade is the construction under the building code, uh, yes, you do have to meet the wind requirements and the flooding flow-through, so to speak, provisions for it. Excuse me? Oh, yes, yeah, inner tie-downs, that's all, that's all considered. If you had a detached garage, you know, to 15 by 24, you would, you would have to provide, and you're in a flood plain, you would have to provide for flow-through protections or provisions so that flood waters wouldn't be able to go in, enter and go out. It can only be used for, uh, storage, motor vehicle parking, and such. As far as a shed goes, they've been pretty much considered an insignificant structure under the previous FEMA regulations. It was kind of up to the discretion of the community as to how much value or weight you wanted to put upon it.
Right, right, okay. Thank you, Jeff. Sure.
That may, I, I agree, I'm sure that's the way it's been done, because I've seen a lot of little sheds go up, but, but this specifically spells out requirements, and you're putting it in as a, an ordinance, so is it or is it not going to be adhered to? I mean, if it's not going to be adhered to, do you have to put it in there? I mean, 100 square feet is a small shed, that's 10 by 10. Uh, you can't put too much in a, in a shed that size. I mean, I don't know how important this is, but it is a town council meeting, it is something you're going to vote on tonight?
Yes.
Can or cannot someone buy a 144-square-foot shed and put it on cinder blocks on their property? Because most of Middle Bridge Road where I live is all in the flood plain zone, so if anybody there wants to put a shed there, I'm not saying Jeff's going to come down with a, you know, the marshal and arrest him or anything, but you're going to be in violation technically, correct? So technically you can't.
From the wording of this, yes.
Well, you know.
Would you be in violation now?
Perhaps, perhaps, I don't know which would trump which. I think the, now, the building code specifies anything less than 200 square feet as an accessory structure has to be tied down. It doesn't necessarily have to meet the frost protection. That gets, that gets a little bit special. Now, whether or not this ordinance, I don't believe, you know, legal counsel could probably address that better than I. I don't believe when they adopt the building code that a local ordinance can trump the building code. So that's, that's where that stands. If you've got a 12 by, 12 by 16 storage shed, I think that comes up to 192 square feet. You know, you don't have to have frost protection for it. Yes, you have to anchor it down to withstand, you know, the wind loads. As far as flooding and flow-through, that is, under 200 square feet isn't considered a problem, I don't believe.
But isn't this local ordinance stricter than the current building codes?
I'm not certain if the building code permits the local ordinance to trumpet in that respect.
I think Mike's looking that up.
Okay, so if there's uncertainty here.
Mike is looking that up.
Yeah, it's section 5 of Exhibit 1, it's on page 4. It refers to detached accessory structures in the various zones. They're clearly exempting structures that meet all these requirements. There's no question about that.
Under $1,000?
Correct.
Well, can you buy a shed for under $1,000? That's my point.
I think.
I've seen it at Home Depot.
I think this is all, this is meant to be an easy line that's drawn. If, in fact, these criteria are met, there is no question that those type of accessory structures do not qualify. They don't have to go through the, you know, putting them up on blocks, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's interpretation after that. I mean, it leaves it to the discretion of the building official under the building code guidelines, what happens beyond that? Because I, there's, there is discretion above, it's just this is a line below which there's no question these regulations don't apply. These regulations could certainly apply if you get something that's more than 100 square feet. I think it's going to, once again, um, the building officials have to determine where it's placed on the property, you know.
Well, once again, I'm just coming from the perspective of too much regulation in my mind.
No, I understand.
It's kind of, you know, 100, like, once again, it's spelled out there, so.
These are the guidelines that we were given, and these are the black and white guidelines. There's no discretion there.
So the question, I guess, would be is, if you change the language in this and up the requirements on that, would you be in violation of the flood insurance program? And then now you would not be, because $1,000, I have flood insurance, and there's a $2,000 deduction, deductible. And I don't even know if sheds are covered under my thing, I mean, you know. So, I mean, I don't know why there's this requirement, but that's why I'm asking.
Maybe I can ask Jeff this, what is the typical size of a shed? I, I mean, 10 by 10, that's, there's your 100, but.
Usually, a large shed would be 12 by 16. That's usually what they, uh, what they would opt to when they get up to that, to that limit, because once you get past the 200 square feet in area, it requires more costly foundations.
So it's under, you would say under 200 square feet then?
Under 200 square feet is your typical backyard storage shed.
So one of the suggestions that Steve and I have been discussing is if you want to amend that to 200 square feet, and I assume the value less than 1,000's not going to work either.
No.
Well, hang on, $1,000 in the tax assesses valuation or what Home Depot is going to charge you for? It's two different things.
Once again, there you go, right, exactly.
$10,000.
Well, I, I have a shed that's like 1950s, and it's full of mice, and I'm assessed at about $1,000 for it, and I don't use it, yeah.
I, I mean, we could maybe change that to 15. I honestly don't know what the cost of a shed is. I don't know what Home Depot would charge for a 12 by 16 shed.
Typically, what I've seen, the retail price for a, purchase a shed, have it installed by Home Depot, Sheds USA.
Well, wouldn't be the installation cost.
It's about $2,500.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be the installation cost, it would be just the value of the actual shed itself. So why don't, you know, another suggestion is we could amend that to 2,000, amend the 100 to 200, and then we'd probably fit, you know, most people who would pick up a shed somewhere.
Exactly, that's all I was driving.
Yeah, and that way we don't.
That is a small shed, I mean, that really limits someone who.
You mean, you can't get your tractor in there?
Yeah, no, I don't even have one, I, yeah.
It depends on how fancy you want to get. If you want the windows and the flower boxes, you can pay, or you can get the metal ones and all the Tupperware ones that they have now, or, you know, the rubbermaid, I should say.
The council can certainly consider those two amendments, changing the number to 200 square feet and $2,000.
So when you need a permit, when you don't need a permit.
Right.
That's free, the permit's free anyways, so there you go, okay.
And just one other question, enough with the sheds, but the permitting, that's a requirement. You have to have this new permit, that's part of the requirements from the federal government.
Yes.
So a person who's building now has to get, you know, the building permit, this permit.
Well, if you're in the zone.
Coastal resource, if you're in the zone.
Right, not everywhere.
Coastal resources, DEM, so it's one, it's, instead of three, it's four now. I'm just clarifying that.
Well.
Correct, right?
You're correct that they will have to get a permit. Will have to create a permit application, but the permit application is going to be a duplication of what the building permit requirements are, what coastal resource requirements are, or DEM requirements. So there's not, we're not seeing that there's going to be additional information. I think it's going to have to be put into a form that we can then be able to provide documentation both to the state and to the federal government. But, yes, it's another application, but it's an application which has the same data requirements that the, that the person would need to do right now without that ordinance.
That leads to the bigger question, if it's a duplication, what exactly, is there anything different on this application that we're already doing?
I think that's what we've been talking about, is that we do not believe that there's any requirements under this ordinance that aren't required under existing codes, whether it's the state building code. The only concern that we have is that there may be a requirement for a base flood elevation determination in those areas where the maps do not have what that elevation is. However, in the coastal zone, they would be required to provide that anyway.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So I'm not sure that there's anything that we've seen in terms of the review that would mean that there'd be additional requirements outside of the existing codes.
Except for more paperwork, basically, that's what you're saying?
It's more paperwork that's being required to provide people with an opportunity to be able to participate in the flood, uh, flood program.
Okay.
If we don't, I, I mean, I think.
Oh, no, you have to do, I'm just questioning what the requirements are.
Well, I'm just suggesting to you that the town is not attempting to create a new application fee. We're not attempting to create a new application form. What we're attempting to do is to provide the foundation so that people can continue to participate in that program. If it requires additional paperwork, it's because we're being required to do so through the federal government requirements, not because the town's looking to do it.
But only new buildings, someone who has an existing structure won't have to fill out anything else. They're sad.
Existing structures with a modification of over 50% of the value would be subject.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
We didn't come up with this one, this is the federal government, right? We'll just, look, Carol?
I think Steve's point is worth reemphasizing, it's that so people can be elevated.
Eligible for their flood insurance.
If we don't put the reg in place, then we're going to jeopardize that.
That's right.
So that's going to help individuals in these zones.
Absolutely.
And I, I think as we discussed before, we could, when they come to take out a building permit, this could be, once you notice that they're in the flood zone, then they could fill this out simultaneously and.
This would be probably the first component in the application process, even before the building permit, because we're going to need to have that information for the building permit, so it can be done in advance of the building permit.
Okay, right. All right, any other question? Any other persons who would like to come forward and discuss this matter? Okay, seen none? Casey, no. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously to close the public hearing. And what is the council's pleasure on the, on the public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept amendments to the town code by adding chapter 21 floodplain management. The floodplain management ordinance purpose is to ensure public safety and minimize hazards to persons and property from flooding. In addition, water courses and floodplains would be protected from encroachment, thereby maintaining their capability to retain floodwaters. The new ordinance also ensures compliance with requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program as administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And we would like to also amend this to say that the sheds.
You want to amend section, what, 5A?
5A.
5A, thank you. Section 5A discussing sheds. The sheds will be changed from 100 to 200 square feet and the price of the shed will be up to $2,000.
And the language that you use is actually structure, but.
Structures.
Structure.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on now to communication items. Communication item B is a communication from Bob McCarthy, principal, inviting council members to attend a two-day conference on August 11th and 12th in preparation for the accreditation of the high school next September. It is received, placed on file, and town council further directs. Did you discuss the council's work session, Carol?
Yeah, we discussed this at work session and I know Kathy, you said you were going to go. I'm definitely going to try and make it. I don't know exactly what time I can get there, but I'm going to go.
Okay. All right, so we'll be two attending.
Anybody else?
We'll leave it open to all the council members if they'd like to attend too. Right? Is that what we discussed?
Yeah, I think it's an open invitation, so.
So you're going to respond individually?
All right, I'll call back. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to communication item D. A communication dated July 13th from Joseph H. Iacoy, executive director, South Kingstown Chamber of Commerce, requesting consideration of a property tax exemption for their welcome information center on Old Tower Hill Road. It is received, placed on file, and town council further directs.
We discussed this in the session also and we decided that it would be valuable to, he didn't come this evening, to have the town manager and possibly the president of the town council discuss this with him so that he understands our stand.
Well, I thought Steve was going to go. They asked for representative from.
Yeah, I think he is. He's asking for a meeting with the representative from municipal official. So he is asking for that.
Okay. Is that all right?
Yeah, I can go if I, if I, we'll set up the date if you want me to go. I thought Steve was going to go, but that's fine.
Well, he's going to, Steve's going to meet, you're going to meet with him, with Steve.
That's what we talked about.
Mr. Iacoy, yes?
I can go if you want. That's fine.
I will meet with Mr. Iacoy at the request of the council, certainly.
Okay, we'll leave it that way. Steve will meet with Mr. Iacoy at the request of the council.
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to comments from interest, I can't talk tonight, interested citizens. If anybody has any comments, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Good evening. David Caprio. Just coming up to give a announcement of a special visitor we have coming to Rhode Island on Thursday. President Bill Clinton's going to be coming to, to the convention center on a stop here in Rhode Island. And it is open to the public. It's a campaign stop for my brother Frank, but I'm coming here to say that there are tickets available. They are online at frankcaprio.com. But also, if anybody locally would like to pick up their tickets and have them in hand, I will be at Casey's tomorrow night and Wednesday night from like 5 to 7 or so. If anybody would like to come down and get their tickets, I have some here if any of you are interested going up to Providence. But it's always a special pleasure and a treat to see a, you know, a president of the United States and he is coming here to Rhode Island. He's known to work that rope line, so if you, I know I have a few pictures with President Clinton from previous visits when he's worked the rope line and you kind of lean in and take a picture and shake his hand. So it's always a thrill to see a president and he gives a great speech. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, Polly, sure, absolutely. Go ahead, Polly.
One thing we try very hard to do at council meetings, and I might as well make this statement now as at any other time, is to keep politics out of the council meetings. And just, I'm sure you understand, David, it's better if we don't get involved in political announcements.
I, I respect that. I'd.
I don't think you were aware. I'm sure you, but it gets more and more difficult to do as time goes on. So I think this is a good time to make this statement.
I respect that and I'm trying to keep it as unpolitical as possible. Just, it's somewhat unique to have a president of the United States coming into Rhode Island, so I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other people for comments from interested citizens? And thank you, Polly, for bringing that up. Jim?
Well, I meant, David, I'm sorry. I should have intercepted you while you're at the microphone. Don't know if you saw last week, but the board of directors at the Rhode Island Employees Pension System, you've seen the increase coming our way for 2011, 2012. I don't know if you've had a chance to run the numbers, but for South Kingstown, I believe, between the teachers and the certified and non-certified, we're looking at another half million dollars plus that has to be coughed up by the town. So that should be on everybody's mind because this is money that, I don't know how we're going to find it. So, anyway, that was just announced last week at the board meeting with the actuaries. I think we're on. Yeah, we are on. So that's something that we should start detailing with numbers here pretty soon. I think the manager agrees with my half million dollar plus assessment, but it looks to be. Steve, is that a number between certified and non-certified that the new pension numbers are?
You're a little bit low. It's probably closer to 580 on the school side and I think, I don't know if I've got the, they have the figures with me. About 580 on the school side for the teachers, a 19% increase. And on the municipals, around 250,000, which is about a 38% increase in what the contribution requirements will be for the 11, 12 year.
Thank you. Of all people, I didn't mean to be that conservative, but it's a frightening number, David. Frightening number. Anyway, go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any report? No. Okay. Moving on to the town manager's report. Steve?
I don't have anything specific. I'll answer any questions council has.
Anybody?
No.
We just, I want to ask how the water ban, everyone's caught up with everything is, no resulting injuries or issues?
No, the ban is still in place for the odd even day, for outdoor water use. We anticipate maintaining that for the towns of Narragansett and South Kingstown for the foreseeable future. We are getting cooperation. We are continuing to talk with those folks that haven't got the word or don't want to participate in the program. But so far, it's been good cooperation. Our water pressure's fine.
My last question, I've gotten a couple of calls on that infamous water tower, Brusseau Park. That one seems to, is this because of the bird issue and condensation? Can you explain why that is more offensive than some of the other towers? What, what is happening there? Gravity? Help the audience understand all this.
I think the only thing I can say to you is that the water tank is constantly filling during the nighttime hours. While it's constantly filling, it's filling with water that's coming out of a well. The temperature of that water is substantially colder than what the ambient temperature is in the surrounding area of the tower. Once the condensation builds up on the tower based on the difference in the temperature of the water within the tower, it creates a mildewing effect and we end up with that type of growth on the exterior. I have asked the public services at this point to determine what the cost will be for the cleaning of that. It seems to be a quite expensive proposition and I'm not sure if that's an appropriate response. What I'm also looking at is to determine if there's any type of application that can reduce the amount of mildewing that is occurring on that tank. We've got similar results occurring on the Mortucket tank. However, there isn't as much of a constant flow of the colder water as there would be going into that, into that tank at, at Sarkatash.
Is that one way to measure it at Brusseau Park? Is that just more use out of that particular tank creating this effect, whatever it is called?
I'm not sure. It may also be the height of the tower, the fact that there are no, there's not as much tree cover. I think there's a number of environmental factors that could add, add to it. I also think that the color of the tank, if it had been a darker color, would have hidden the exterior growth better than what we have. Next time, I think we're going to go with a drab green.
Dark green, dark green. Mold green, mold green would be good. Blame it on Polly and I because we picked the color.
Yeah, I did.
The end of a meeting, I wanted to go with purple, but John said no. We had to go in the green range and we went with the light green.
That's the best I can give you at this point, Jim.
Yeah, camouflage.
I was joking with the purple.
Color woodwork.
Dark green next time, John, when we have that tower. Like a nice moss green. It is bad. I know, I see it from my parents' house. It's bad. Okay, any other questions for Steve? No, moving on to.
Oh, could I mention that the stones returned to the bridge at the Palisades? I was thrilled to see that.
That's correct. That was the first component of one of the projects the DOT is doing in South Kingstown and Narragansett. So yes, all the stone is being replaced, the stone facing on the, on the bridge. And it looks very good.
Is it the original stone?
No. Is it? Oh, it's all, I think so. It's got a nice big cement back that it's stuck to now versus piled on top of each other, but.
No, but I mean, it was, it's the original stone that was stored up in quantity.
Yes, all of that's the original stone. It had been stockpiled until they were able to get that contract in place.
That's great.
Does look good, good. Does look good. Okay. Mike?
I'm just waiting for the mildew to cover the entire tower so that it looks like it's all one color.
It never gets it on that south facing side though. It's amazing, right?
I have nothing else to ask.
Okay. Next, we did our appointments from the month of July. We're moving on to new business items. New business item D is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to T. Miozy Incorporated, 75 Airport Road, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the Arrowhead Trail, Indian Trail North and Indian Trail South road reconstruction project in an amount not to exceed $290,000, including a contingency. And it's further described in the memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager, dated July 19th, 2010, and entitled Bid Recommendation, Arrowhead Trail, Indian Trail North and South. Steve?
The recommendation to, is to award to the lowest qualified bidder. We did receive proposals from five firms. The lowest price being as presented on the agenda tonight. Prices ranged as high as $383,000. The, the project includes the pulverization and reclamation of the existing pavement surfaces on these three roads. It also includes some minor drainage work and the installation of some, of a geo grid system under portions of the roadway where there's an inadequate road base. This had been included in the capital budget for the current year at a cost estimate of $260,000. We're asking for authorization at this point up to $290,000 so that there's an adequate contingency to be able to deal with field conditions that we're faced with once the project is underway. Total length of the, the project is 1,024 linear feet on Arrowhead Trail, 1,573 feet on Indian Trail South and 240 feet on Indian Trail North.
Yeah, certainly. Needs to be done.
Oh, yeah.
Really needs to be done. If there are no questions, then I move for approval of new business resolution D.
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the resol, is new business F, a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise an order of notice of a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended as follow. Class B limited liquor license, application for class B liquor license by Phil's Kitchen Incorporated, DBA Phil's Restaurant, 323 Main Street, Wakefield, by Carl J. Tetzner, president for the first floor dining area, and accord, in accordance with a special use permit granted June, July 21st, 2010 by the zoning board of review, and is further defined in the site plan on file in the town clerk's office.
Excuse me, Kath? I would like to recuse myself and I have the forms I'll be giving to Dale at the end of the meeting.
Okay, Ella. Ella recuses.
I move, oh, is, there's no further discussion?
Well, just make, sorry, just make sure everyone home knows a limited license is beer and wine only. Okay, all right. But there are no hours attached to that, are there, or lunch, dinner?
It's the same, 1 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
It's going to go with public hearing. Go ahead, Polly.
I move approval of new business item F.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 4 to 0 with one recusal. Next is new business item 8, G, a resolution authorizing the town clerk to order notice of public hearing for public discussion relative to the need of additional liquor licenses within the community. This is usually what we do when we have a liquor license in.
And I'm also going to recuse myself from new business item G.
Okay, and Ella's going to recuse herself. This is just something that we do every time we put a liquor license. We have a discussion if we need additional liquor license in the community.
Well, they do go hand in hand.
Yes, they do.
I'll move for approval then of new business resolution G.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 4, 0 with one recusal. Next is new business item H, a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a three-year extension of the privatized operations contract for the Rosehill Regional Transfer Station through June 30th, 2015, with Waste Haulers PO Box 91755, Johnston, Rhode Island. And it's further described in a memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager, dated July 20th, 2010, entitled Rosehill Regional Transfer Station, Three-Year Contract Extension. Steve?
The town awarded a contract in September of 2007 to Waste Haulers for the five-year contract to run the Rosehill Regional Transfer Station. Excuse me. Within that contract was the ability to provide for a five-year contract extension. That contract extension would, would take the potential negotiating period up through 2017. The existing contract went from January 1st of 2008 through December 31 of 2012. The vendor has requested the town to extend the contract for a five-year period. We have agreed and proposed for council consideration a contract extension which will be of a three-year nature. The reason I'm doing that is because they are two years left in the contract at this time. So they can get a five-year contract extension now with only three years added on to the existing contract. What we have agreed to is that there would be revisions to the fee schedules that were a part of the initial five-year contract. I've provided the council with a spreadsheet which shows all of the fees and charges that are associated with the transfer station program. By extending the contract now with the two years remaining on it, By extending the contract now with the two years remaining on it, we will be able to reduce the prices associated with the bag tag fee. Right now, the bag tag fee for the 10, 11 year is $1.27. It would go to $1.34 in the 11, 12 year. What we're proposing is that it would stay at $1.27 for the next five years, so there would be no increase on that fee. We will also be adjusting what the town is responsible to pay for the disposal of residential waste. Under the existing contract, we, to pay during the current year and the 11, 12 year, $67.20 per ton. With the revised contract, that'll be brought back down to $64 per ton and will remain at just $32 above, $32 above whatever we, the contractor is responsible for paying at the Johnston landfill. We will also be adjusting the fee that the contractor pays to the town for the process of non-residential commercial, or commercial waste that travels through that station. Current time, there's about 59,000 tons that are processed through the station. The town receives a dollar for each of those tons, or $59,000, a year in rental revenue. With the revised contract, the vendor will be responsible instead of paying as the $1 in the current year and $1 in the 11, 12 year, to paying the town $2 in each of those years, or doubling of the fee or an additional $59,000 each year. In the latter three years or the actual contract extension period, that'll increase to $2.50. Again, if we make no changes in the contract now, it would stay at $1 for each of the two years, the current year and next year. We've also been able to get adjustments on the fees that would be associated with bulky waste. Bulky waste under the existing contract was to go to $140 per ton as of the 11, 12 year. We are looking to have that stay at the $120 fee as it is in the current year, and that would be extended out for the next three years as well for the extension period. We would also see yard waste drop. Yard waste is, for the 10, 11 years, is at $80 per load. That will now go back down to $70 a load and will stay at the $70 a load through the five-year term, the two years of the contract revision and the three years of the extension. All told, each year, current year and next year, be approximately $95,000 in additional fees that will be paid by the contractor to the town for the three-year extension. That'll increase by approximately another $30,000 each year. I think that this is a very good adjustment on the existing contract. It will save users of the station depositing bulky waste, users of the station with yard waste, as well as bag tag users, and the rental fee to the town with a doubling effect. What we will also require the contractor is that he will construct a new scale house. He will install a new outbound platform scale to do away with some of the queuing time problems that we're running into now. There'll be litter control containment netting system that'll be installed. There'll be a replacement in the residential users' component of the transfer station where people will be able to get rid of the bottles, cans, and paper, as well as the garbage, at one location rather than having to move through the cells the way it's set up now. We will also see an expansion of the area where the bulky waste is managed, and there'll be modifications within the recycling building that will allow for greater storage and hopefully a better movement of the materials in and out of the site. We're also requiring him to increase the performance bond by another $250,000. I did not expect that we would be seeing a contract renegotiation three years into the five-year contract. It is allowed under the, under the terms of the existing contract, and it also is in the town's best interest based on the price differentials that we've been able to arrive at agreement with. The objective of the vendor is that he needs to sign five-year pay or put contracts with out-of-state disposal areas for him to be able to guarantee waste streams to them. He needs to be able to know that the transfer station will be under his use and management and operation for that five-year term. That's also the reason why I did not go out for what would have been a seven-year extension. He will still have the opportunity at the close of the revised contract to negotiate for an additional two years, but it'll be subject at that time to terms and conditions being reviewed and negotiated between the town and that contractor. We would not need to extend the contract further. We could put it back out to public bid if we were unable to arrive at mutually agreeable figures for both his fee structure and for the rental structure coming back to the town. Dollars that will come in from this program will also be able to be used to pay down some of the costs associated with service of the, the town's bonds associated with the Super Fund cleanup at Rose Hill and at Plains Road. I think it's a win-win for the town as well as for the vendor, and I think that based on his needs, the town's needs are being served in a better manner.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Jen?
Well, we talked about a place to see or be seen. This is going to be quite an operation. My question is, are they, is this going to be kind of an epicenter for a lot more waste coming to us, going through this facility to their end users?
I think it will allow them to maintain the, the volume that they currently have. I don't think that the facility really has the capability of really seeing probably more than the 65,000 ton going through that facility. And again, this, what they need to be able to do is to have attractive prices to the third-party vendors that are coming and using that. If he can guarantee his prices of disposal, his prices will be able to attract that waste coming through. If we didn't provide him with the extension, our concern was that the 59,000 tons that he was doing in the current year would probably drop, based on his estimates, down to probably in the 20, 20,000 range, so we would be losing, you know, approximately $30,000.
All right, that makes sense then. We talked about, are they pleased with the recycling effort here? We talked about this in the work session. How are we doing percentage-wise? Is there any real fair way to measure this?
Are you talking about?
The recycling effort at the transfer station on behalf of our communities?
The recycling effort at the transfer station is excellent. We are still obtaining, I believe, 40% rates, about 40% of the waste stream coming in with the bag tag program is going into the containers for the recycling, so that's an excellent rate of return. The recycling efforts on the home pickups with the private vendors that we have is still a work in progress. We have two of the five contractors that are in the 25 to 31% range, and we have two of the contractors that are really at minimal rates. We are sending them letters at this point, asking for legal responses as to whether or not we will continue to maintain those licenses for those, those vendors.
When you mention minimum rates, do you mean zero? Are they mixing everything? Is that?
Probably between an 8 and 15% rates is, is what we've seen on a, on a few of the vendors. They're the smaller vendors, but we're seeing, you know, less than an appropriate rate of, in terms of what that ratio should be. Even with those small, small client bases, we should be seeing in the 25 to 30% range at minimum.
So what kind of stick are we using here? Carrot and stick approach? What?
The biggest stick is that we would, we would take away their license and not allow them to pick up in the community. We've requested at this point from non-complying vendors to supply remediation plans on how they will up their, their level of participation. But we never thought that this would be an easy process. I think that the, the major haulers have done a good job. I think they've, that it may also be that a few of the larger haulers have learned how to bring material in and to ensure that their ratios are in the 30% range.
Great.
So I'm not going to say that everybody is doing it 100% according to plan, but I think that we are seeing a reasonable rate of return on the recycling from the transfer station, and we're still not where we want to be yet on the, the home pickups.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Any questions for Steve? Carol?
Steve, this contractor, the revisions would take place immediately as soon as you signed?
That's correct. It'll be retroactive July 1st.
Oh, well.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion then?
I move approval of new business item H.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing the Town Manager to execute an individual payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreements for the years 2010, 2011 with the town, the South Kingstown, excuse me, the South Kingstown Land Trust, Welcome House of South County, and the Jewish Children's Home of Rhode Island, Camp Jury, in accordance with the Town Code, Chapter 17, Taxation, Article 4, Property Tax Exemptions and Payment in Lieu of Tax Agreements for Charitable Organizations, Section 17-45, Authorization, and to affirm the guidelines described in the memorandum from the Town Manager to the Town Council dated July 22, 2010, entitled Pilot Program 2010, 2011. Steve?
We're recommending that the council will authorize the three pilot agreements that we just referenced, one with the land trust, one with Camp Jury, and one with Welcome House, under the same terms and conditions that have been used over the past several years. The only changes that are here are the new assessment rates are in place based on the revaluation numbers for the, the land trust as well as Camp Jury and Welcome House. Again, with, with Welcome House, we're looking at about a 25% of the taxable value of the residential properties or rental units that they own. This equates to about 8% of what the rental income is that, is forecasted would be received by that agency at a market rent. As far as the, the land trust is concerned, this deals with the, with the land trust holding at 17 Mattoon Beach Road where their headquarters is located, and it's based on taking a 50% value of the assessment values on both land and building associated with that, that property holding. With Camp Jury, we are assessing based on the open space value or $500 per acre for the acreage that they maintain, which is 73 acres, and we are charging them for one house lot and one residential unit based on the caretaker house that's on that property. Those are the, the three agreements that come under the, the pilot legislation that you referenced in the, in that resolution. I would note, I'm still waiting to get final confirmation on the numbers associated with Camp Jury. Camp Jury, because they last year began leasing space to the Middle Bridge, Middle Bridge School, we are requiring them to capitalize the value of that, that lease agreement and to pay taxes accordingly. The numbers that I presented, I still need to get final authorization from Camp Jury, but I don't expect that they'll be anything different than what I presented to you this evening.
Okay. Any questions regarding the pilot program? Nope? Okay. Hearing none? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve new business item, aye.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 46-5 to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, and pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to collective bargaining and/or litigation. Is there a motion? Well, you have to go actually roll call into...
Council President Fogarty.
Aye.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill.
Aye.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Aye.
Unanimous affirmative vote to adjourn to closed executive session at 8:00.
Okay. Thank you.
8:45?
8:45. Thank you.